All right. Hi, everybody. Welcome to the Rules and Government Relations Meeting of September 20th, 2021, 6:00 PM. This meeting is being held remote over Zoom per executive order back in 2020 from Governor Baker suspending certain parts of open meeting law. I think to start, we have minutes from last, from the last meeting, right?
Yes, I will make a motion to approve the minutes from eight, nine.
I'll second that. So all in favor, Councilor Coniff?
Aye.
Councilor Peak votes aye. That was easy. Okay. So in terms of this meeting, I think sort of the idea that I had had was to go over our the, the, the agenda, like the two items, the first one being the resolution related to medicinal plants and the other one being the climate emergency resolution. Councilor Coniff, is there anything else on our agenda that you'd like to discuss today?
Um, we don't need to discuss it, but at some point, we do need to wrap up rule 20. Have, have we wrapped it up yet? Because it's still on the agenda.
Oh, I thought we voted to dismiss that.
It didn't get dismissed.
Oh, well, I'll talk to Barbara about that and see what's going on there. I was pretty sure that that's what happened there. All right, so in terms of this stuff, I'm sorry, I like, I kind of just got home and am a little scattered, right? Yes, so yes, when last we met, we had spoken, we had, I think, a pretty decent amount of debate about the ins and outs of the resolution regarding the decriminalization of therapeutic psychedelic plants. I know that there had been a, a thought that Counselor Zaret and Counselor Rest might get together and try and workshop some of that language. My understanding is that that did not occur. But at this point, I've said just about everything that I feel like I have to say about that. So if there's any, anyone else who wants to add any additional points or make any suggestions, I'm, I'm open to that. But I, I think I'm just probably going to be facilitating at this point because I, I feel like where I, I'm pretty, I, I feel like that I don't really have any additional questions on this. But Counselor Coniff, have you had any thoughts on this or?
No, I, I had understood that it was something that Counselor Risk wanted to kind of talk some more about, but I think you and I were pretty settled.
Yeah. And Counselor Zaret, in the time since we last met about this, has there been, have you had any thoughts about any changes that you'd like to see to, for what we had?
Yeah, so I, as, as you're aware, Counselor Risk sent out a document, I don't remember when, maybe a few weeks ago, he made some edits and like, as I indicated, I, I didn't want to respond to make, to give at least the appearance of an open meeting law or deliberation issue. So I read through, I read through his, his notes, I, and I can kind of, I, I have some responses to both of them. I think some, some of which helped me tighten up the language and some of which I'll just comment on if you want me to do that really quickly.
Go for it.
So I think, you know, at least from my perspective, the res, this resolution, at least here in East Hampton, we've really narrowed down the scope of it to really talk about the therapeutic benefits of, of, of these plant-based medicines. And I mean, I always say for the record, me personally, I'd rather, I would, in a, in a perfect world, I'd love to see just general decriminalization like we saw with cannabis, when it started on the, the, the the kind of the strata of decriminalization, medical, and then recreational, but it's all about baby steps. I learned a lot about kind of how these processes happen. So I put some, so Counselor Risk had, had expressed some concerns about some of the language we use. And so I wanted to be thoughtful and responding to him and I, I, I recommended potentially potentially striking some parts, but I, I'll leave that up to obviously the, this committee. And I introduced the word therapeutic in a few places, mostly because of my inference and understanding of kind of where we were going with this. So and, and then a few comments just about some of, some of my colleagues' comments, just to kind of clarify a few things. Do you want me to, to kind of go through that really quickly or?
Sure. Should I make you a co-host for sharing purposes?
Sure. Sharing is caring. Okay, let me figure out how to do this. Okay. Can you see this? Let's see. What do you see right now? Do you see the resolution decriminalizing controlled substances? Is that what you see?
Yep.
Okay, so I'll just kind of quickly go through all the points. So the first so Counselor Risk had an issue or had a concern about this, this clause about using city funds or resource in the enforcement of laws for criminal penalties and use of possession, et cetera. I could take or leave that. I don't think that, that, that takes away from the ultimate intention and scope of what we're talking about here. Because ultimately, if the intention is to have the lowest level enforcement, that implies that there's no real investment of funds going into that. So I wanted to be thoughtful to his concern there and I recommended taking that out. But again, that's, this is, these are just my recommendations. And I think it's, it's also repetitive in terms of some of the other recommendations we're making. Here there was a question about how the police know that something's for therapeutic use. And again, we're just kind of laying the crepe here for what would come later, right? We're, we're just kind of like offering intention. We're not necessarily offering legislative language or ordinance. We're saying this is what we feel and what we think. And these are, this is, this is our, our hearts and minds. So you know, things like how do the police know that's, that it's the possession of an entheogenic substance is for therapeutic use? Well, we'll figure that out down the road. We're not making a law right now. We're, we're expressing, we're expressing a feeling here of what, what the council stands for. And that's what I said. I said, this is laying framework for what the legislation could look like. Maybe a law that only allow possession of certain amounts such as, or identify a patient similar to what they did with cannabis. So that was my response to that comment. Counselor Risk had some concerns about the word distribution, and I did think it was important maybe to kind of clarify that. So my understanding of distribution here would be kind of almost like compassionate caregiver distribution. So we're not talking about large-scale distribution. We're talking about what we see a lot in the cannabis community, at least from my perspective, where there's actually this real, there's this real psychic, there's this, there's this community among these plant-based medicines. And some people, for a variety of reasons, don't have the resources to grow, either because they don't know how, because of the, where they live. And so it allows these caregiver relationships where someone else can grow, you know, an appropriate amount of these, of these plans for personal use and give them to, to, to someone for caregiver purposes. So I think I took out, I took out like personal adult use and medical and just wrote therapeutic purposes. And, and at the end of the day too, what people consider therapeutic purposes can vary broadly, you know, doing something that feels like it's appropriate and feels good for yourself, that could be considered therapeutic, just to be clear. So I think that somewhere, oh, I wrote, I just crossed out the, the general word distributing and wrote distribute, distribution by caregivers to just be very clear about what we were talking about here. And then down here, so there was a question. There was a question about supporting distribution at all. And this clause here where it was questioned, we were, we were saying what we don't authorize. So I think that there was, there was maybe just like a misreading of, of the clause here and understand that we were saying we don't authorize distribution to individuals under 21 on school grounds, large-scale commercial distribution, et cetera. Again, this is about establishing a compassionate community around these plants and helping people out and helping each other. I, there was a question about, so Counselor Risk commented, this, this word sends the message that these drugs are safe and possession should not be a crime. Yes, that's the purpose of the resolution. They are safe. And we're, we're, we're not necessarily us, but a lot of people, people less fortunate than us are the, the targets and the end product of, you know, at this point, probably close to 60 years of an artificial framework that says that these don't have therapeutic value, that they have a high, a high chance of addiction. These things aren't true. There was this really great Counselor Coniff had mentioned the Johns Hopkins recommendations. They're recommending declassifying or reclassifying these plants to schedule four. There, there's minimal, there's, they don't have, there's, there's some great peer-reviewed articles out there showing that there is pretty much minimal risk of addiction or abuse with these plants. I could tell you personally from my experience as an almost 20-year medical provider that I just don't hear about people coming into the emergency room overdosing on mushrooms. So, and then, and then to, to go on, I was worried, again, the talk about sending the message, you know, and suggesting maybe using language to reduce the criminality, I think that kind of undermines the, and with all due respect, I think it undermines the intention, the scope of this resolution. We're, we're looking to decriminalize, so a variety of reasons. So there's, I did a lot of research since our last meeting. There's, there's these, these plants are, are very safe. Many of them have, or most of them have lethal doses that are far lower than things you can commonly find in your medical cabinet, your doctors can prescribe to you. And then I'll quickly just review some of this red line, this red language that I introduced last time after collaboration with a discussion with our Healthy Youth Coalition, because at the end of the day, we're talking about adult use, adult therapeutic use, right? And again, what therapeutic means can mean a lot of things, but it's very, very, very important to drive home the fact that we're talking about these things that our intention is for informed use and that informed use means gathering the appropriate data around these things and educating adults who are using it, but also preventing youth access and, and, and youth from using that. So again, I had included this language last time that, that talks about recommending appropriate community and youth education, data collection, help impact assessments, using scientific information, lockbox programs, things like that. That, that's really it. I also, I do see that my, our other co-sponsor, Counselor Derby's here too. So if there's any questions about, about those recommendations, I'm happy to answer them. But I'd also would like my, I think Counselor Derby wasn't here before. So with your permission, I'd also like to offer him to, to give any input.
I was about to suggest the same thing.
Well, thanks. I, I think that this looks good. The, I don't have any issue with the, the changes. And I would say I would agree with Counselors Eric that this is a resolution to put our intention forward that we feel that these should be descheduled and decriminalized. You know, I guess like the only piece that I have a little bit of an issue with, you know, one of the, one of the therapies, as you look at this, and, and it sounds like Counselor Coniff had, had checked out the John Hopkins psychiatry and behavioral sciences program for the psychedelics research and psilocybin therapy. I think that's a really great resource. Another really great resource that, and if people haven't seen it yet, is a documentary on Netflix called Fantastic Fungi, has Paul Stamets in it, who's like probably one of the, the most renowned experts on this in the world, Dr. Andrew Wiles in there as well. But you know, I think PTSD and, and you know, really things that are really, impact the, the storage of memories and, and those memories coming back in a, in a really profound way. And I would really, I mean, I, I, as a high school teacher, I, I cannot emphasize enough that I want to prevent youth access, but I also realized that there's a lot of, you know, young people that have trauma and PTSD. And I, I want to say that if there's a therapy out there that can help them, that we should be all in to try to support that. You know, so while obviously we, we want to make sure that there's no diversion to, for, you know, people that aren't in need of it. I, I just want to make sure that we are full, full throttle and making sure the people that need it are able to get it eventually. And I mean, and, and I know that that's, that really doesn't change anything. I just wanted to state that because I feel like it's true, just like, you know, children that have a seizure disorder shouldn't be denied access to THC that stops their seizures, you know. So I just wanted to put that out there because I thought it, but I think everything else is really good. So thanks, thanks very much.
Thanks, Counselor Derby. So yeah, as far as this goes, like, you know, th- these things are always for me, like resolutions like this are always a little bit tricky because just exactly what impact they'll have and exactly how we should word everything to, you know, maximize that impact is something that, to be honest, I've just never had, like, I never feel like I've had a fully, like, fleshed out theory about. I think that the, the important thing here for me is that like, we, we don't actually have the ability, obviously, to, to decriminalize any of this stuff. What we have the ability to do is we have the ability to tell other elected officials how the city council as a group feels about these things. And we have the ability to, you know, inform our city departments of sort of, you know, at the moments where they have some leeway and how they want to handle a situation, sort of where our perspectives are. And I feel like this accomplishes that without, you know, I, I, I kind of do get like, you know, just when it, when we first started talking about the idea of doing a resolution about this. You know, there, there's something a little bit sticky about it that, that Counselor Risk clearly has a trouble, trouble with, which is just like, just saying like something that's saying that something that is currently, you know, criminal and illegal that we actually think it, it, it shouldn't be. You know, there, there's, I, I don't personally feel like there's like a like that's the same as saying, go ahead, everybody, go, you know, take these plants. But I, I can, like, I, I, I get why that, you know, like, I, I understand his concerns, but at the end of the day, I, I do think like, you know, we, we've talked about this, we've debated it. I think it's pretty clear where people are. I'm personally prepared to vote, but I did see that there's a good number of people from the public who are here. So I'm actually just gonna end the, or, oh, could you actually just end the screen share, Counselors Eric, just that I can see people's faces. And then, sorry. Owen, did you have your hand, were you raising your hand because you want to say something?
Yes, sir. I just wanted to, just, yeah, I just wanted to say, because you are introducing the public, but I also wanted, I wanted to make sure I appropriately represented a conversation I had with James Davis. So I think that's going to speak, but he had sent me some suggestions. I didn't want to introduce them because I feel he'll be better at explaining them. So I just wanted to kind of preface, preface the, some of the public speak with that. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, cool. Then I guess just anyone from the public, from the city that would want to go, just if you could just raise your hand and zoom. So I know who you are. Oh, I see you, James. Why don't you start? And I just want to say like, I want to give everyone who wants to talk a chance to talk before we like workshop anything. So if you make suggestions and I'm just like, okay, great, thanks. And then call on somebody else. Like, I'm not trying to blow you off. I just want to get everyone to have a chance to talk before we sort of go back into, you know, actually talking, like debating this. So James, go ahead.
Thank you, Counselor Peak. And I just wanted to say I've really appreciated your leadership, Owen's leadership, and really all the city councilors in, in East Hampton for giving this, the attention it deserves as an issue. So the one suggestion that we have to the language, at least as what I saw on the screen share.
James, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Can you just tell us who you are and where you're from? And, and are you a resident of the city or are you an expert on the topic? That's all. Just for the minutes.
Hi, Counselor. I am a resident of Somerville and an organizer in Western Massachusetts as well. I authored the resolution. And I lead Bay Staters for Natural Medicine, which is an organization that is organizing and passing these resolutions in other cities. I also, I'm the Legislative Director for the State Cannabis Committee and regularly observe how, you know, onerous regulations prevent people from affording and accessing the cannabis products they need, including veterans and, and folks who need it. So one suggestion that I would have for this resolution would be to exempt lofophoria from the list of controlled substances that are decriminalized for possession. I thought that this was included in the original draft that we had sent to you all and had been discussing from the beginning, but maybe an older draft was what was being passed around. It's really a minor change that's done on behalf of the Native American Church and the Indigenous peyote conservation initiative. Lofophoria is a category of plants that includes peyote and one other cacti. We've just been asked by those groups to not technically decriminalize possession, to generally discourage people from using peyote if you're not an indigenous person. That's because peyote, there's a real shortage of it in the Southwest because of mining, because of grazing cows. And we really feel responsibility to indigenous people to send a message that possession of peyote by non-indigenous people should be discouraged. There's other plants that can have the same therapeutic benefits and artificial versions of mescaline and peyote. So I would just be extremely grateful to have that added. The resolution as written would technically allow people to grow peyote because scientists are, are trying to conserve the species. But we do have an obligation to those, to those bigger stakeholders to, to follow their advice with resolutions. And so that's the change that I would recommend. And I thought that it was in the original draft. There were actually some other things I wanted to say. But I definitely think that we need to, we need to include that if possible. The second thing I just wanted to say is I appreciate Owen's addition of therapeutic. I think that it's a great addition to the resolution and intent that you all want to convey as a community. The reason why therapeutic is, is better than medical is because a lot of folks are excluded from our healthcare system. And this is really a resolution that will help us signal at the state level that we don't agree with monopolization by foreign companies, that we don't believe that these regimens should cost $15,000 and require a diagnosis, that people should be able to work with healers like Misha, a resident of East Hampton, to get informal counseling as well. That's way more affordable. I'll just wrap up my comments by saying first responders also are excluded by narrowly medically legalizing access because a lot of police officers that suffer with PTSD can lose their job if they try to go in for a formal diagnosis or try to go through those steps. So this is a way of signaling the intent is to benefit people spiritually and medically. You know, physically, but that the medical system is not necessarily the ideal way for everyone to access these. Hope that makes sense. And again, thank you for calling on me, Counselor Peak. And I hope we can just add that small bit of language. I'm not sure. I'm going to email Owen about it right now. So he has the document, but thank you so much.
Thanks, James. Anyone else want to speak about this? All right, I see Stephen's hand. Go ahead, Stephen.
All right, can everyone hear me? All right, so um, I recognize some faces in here and y'all have probably heard my personal story before, so I won't get into that. I just want to say that as a, you know, citizen, someone who's not involved in government or any legislation or anything like that, I recognize what you people are doing and it probably takes a certain amount of courage to set forth, which is why I really appreciate what James has done and kind of started it out in, in Boston. And it's, it's hard to be the first, right? And so at least now we can point to a couple other places. I believe North Hampton is on our side too. So I just want to let you know that I appreciate y'all. I stand by you guys. And if you ever need my support, I was just like a humble human citizen and business owner in any way. I'm happy to do so. So again, thank you. I, I completely believe in this cause. I believe in what you guys are doing and I'm just here to help in any way. And that is all I have to say.
Hey, Stephen, can you just, for the record, where are you at East Hampton?
Yep, so I, I'm a business owner in East Hampton. I own Go With The Float. Without getting into that too much, floating is a wellness practice and I've just dedicated my life to help, helping people heal. And I've gone through on a healing journey myself. And I know for a fact that I wouldn't be where I am in this life wanting, because I was able to heal myself, I'm now able to heal others. And I owe a great gratitude of that because of psychedelics.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, I see Shelby and Donovan have a hand up. If anyone else wants to use the Zoom raise hand feature, it'll just sort of put you in the queue. There's stuff you want to talk about. But Shelby and/or Donovan, go ahead.
Hi, Shelby Lee. I'm in Precinct Four. You guys have heard from me on this issue before. And I just wanted to kind of, again, second what Stefan was saying. And also, you know, I'm available to speak on this for anybody who has any questions as well. Thanks.
Thanks. Rebecca.
Hi, everyone. Rebecca Edwards from the East Hampton Healthy Youth Coalition. I just wanted to, I was coming to the meeting to just listen and follow along. I was in a previous meeting and kind of, I don't know, shared what I was going to share then and worked with Counselor Zaret to strengthen the language around over 21 use and tracking youth data and, and also like having a plan for if we start seeing increased use in the youth community. And I just wanted to speak to what Counselor Derby said. Because they, it makes me very nervous when I hear somebody say that like, yes, it's therapeutic for over 21 use, but also we want to like these, this medicine to help everybody who needs the help, which of course on principle, I want everybody who needs help with anxiety and PTSD. I want everyone to get the help and support they need. But for youth, there is data that says that psychedelic substances do negatively impact brain development. And I would want that, I would want that used to be under the direction of a medical-trained medical professional. So just, it, it just scared me a little bit to hear that because it also feels like the slippery slope of, okay, we really, if this goes through, we really want youth to be safe and we want people to be thinking about keeping youth safe while there are increased substances in their surrounding environment and community.
Thanks. Anybody else have anything they want to say before we vote on this? Counselors Eric.
I, so I just wanted to say I really like the addition that, that, that James said. He had sent this to me like I think last week, and I didn't completely understand it, but now that he was, he vocalized it. It made a lot more sense to me, especially in terms of the intersection that our city has with honoring indigenous people. And so if I would, I would encourage this body to consider including some of that exemption language, just just for the purpose of being clear about um, what we're doing here for those populations as well.
Yeah, I mean, so my plan at the end of this was just to take a vote on the language as amended, as in like the, with, with the changes you made. So if you just want to make that change right now um, to the document that you had, uh, then to track changes, that, that's, I have no objection to that. Uh, Cindy, I see your hand.
Hi, everyone. My name is Cindy and I'm a resident of East Hampton at fourteen Glick. Um, I also work with the high school and your youth, and I am very, very, very concerned. Um, I actually work more with the minority students in the school, and I'm very, very concerned uh, since one of my student approached me that an adult offered mushrooms to them. So um, I, at this moment at the high school, like we connected with the Healthy Youth Coalition, and we just recently got a lot of information in the center, how to prevent marijuana, alcohol and all that. But we don't have a lot of information on these um, and for youth. And I'm very, very concerned uh, since I hear the stories from the students uh, that this, you know, we don't have enough information of this for our youth currently to understand. Like, we are adults and we can read and we can inform ourselves because we are professionals. Um, but all they see is the title. This is medical. Oh, it's good for me. Um, you know, I'm very concerned by, you know, things that being said in, in the high school with the youth. And like Rebecca expressed, um, I'm very concerned, you know, that this turns to another thing. And we don't have enough information in our hands for, to give our youth. Um, like brochures or packets or a little card saying this is what can cost us and this what can save you. Or, you know, these are for grownups, you know, of course, I did the, you don't, the no, say no speech. But um, you know, it will be helpful if we actually, as a Healthy Coalition or Speefy or the same high school, the health class or something, we have more information about this before we actually keep, you know, saying, yes, we, this is good. And don't get me wrong, I, a hundred percent that people have access to all kinds of medications and stuff. But you know, it concern me when the kids that actually come to my center um, is having access to this kind of drugs. And I, I, you know, they don't know the consequence. They're young and their brain actually can be affected. Uh, the development of the brain, if they actually start using this kind of um, drug, very young without a medical, um, under medical concession or, you know, revision. I don't know what doctor, you know, because if I don't have money to go to a doctor, you know, to prescribe me this, how am I going to get it? You know, the youth actually gets stuff from everywhere. So that's my concern. That's my concern that we don't have enough information on this for the youth. Um, and for the youth, not only the high school, but um, I don't know if you read, but kids are starting vaping at twelve years old now. So that's, you know, from the middle school and the high school, I think we should have more information on this. That's just my concern. Thank you.
Um, Councillor Zerrit, I think he, I see your hand.
Is it okay for me to respond to another comment or?
Um, I, you know, in general, I think we want to uh, address things towards us, but I think you can probably discuss this in an appropriate way.
I would just say that I, I um, I agree with everything that Cindy just said, and that was why um, I sat down with, with Bree and with Rebecca to pull, pu- put language into the resolution that really strengthened the framework around how we were going to address this issue around uh, youth. And let's remember too, it's a resolution, it's not law. So, I mean, this opens up. So what are some things we can do in the city with this? Um, you know, we can start talking about, we can tomorrow. I mean, we don't even need a resolution. We could start talking about how to put together some, some pamphlets about um, the risks and the non-risks or the risks to youth um, with these substances. I bet that the Bay Staters have all sort of information about education around this, and I would be more than happy to partner with our Healthy Youth Coalition around the, the youth, uh, the youth issue around here. So I'm just offering myself up and, and again, that there's, there's two paragraphs or one paragraph in here lengthy that really, I feel addresses the exact concerns that Cindy has because they're legitimate concerns.
Yeah, and I, I see a couple people with hands. I, I would just say that I, I would personally, although I'm, I'm not, you know, we don't really have any jurisdiction over the schools, but I, I would certainly encourage that because, you know, the reality is that, you know, whatever we do, there, there is kind of a, a moment going on culturally in terms of the way that we're talking about these substances and sort of the research that's coming out around them and all of this stuff. And uh, just as a result of that, like, you know, that's gonna, the kids are gonna hear about it. Uh, you know, if this falls flat and dies and, you know, committee or on the council, like they're, like that media is still out there. Those conversations are still out there. I certainly think that it's good to make sure the kids have information about what's going on. Um, so, but you know, that's, uh, you know, we on the city council can only do so much about that because we're not in charge of the, you know, the curriculum, obviously. Um, Councillor Coniff, I see your hand, and then James, I see your hand.
Thanks. Um, I, I'm currently reading a book by Michael Pollan. Um, and one of the things he says, and maybe we can incorporate it in here, is that when you talk about the use of psychedelics and you talk about the use of mushrooms, that they should very much be under the guidance of um, a caretaker or a medical provider. That they should not be something you're just popping at home and hoping for the best. Um, and, and it might be in here, but maybe that's something that we could add to be very specific that while we support these, we support these in a responsible way and to be used. If I'm saying it right, I'll have to go back and read the part of the book that he was talking about it, but that the, the safe way to do it is under the care of another person while you're going, while you're having it done. I guess it's, I was gonna say going on a trip, but um, while you're having it done. So I don't know if that, we can beef up the language with something like that, if that makes sense.
Sure. Uh, James, I see your hand.
Uh, thank you so much, Councillor Peak. Uh, to briefly uh, mention Cindy's points, I really appreciate where she is coming from and uh, those concerns. One point I would just like to add to the conversation is that children are already uh, using cannabis products, using vapes, using these products despite their illegality, as you pointed out, Councillor Peak. Uh, and we're in a cultural moment where they have the internet and they can learn about uh, all of these things. Uh, so we are working with schools and we have a few educators on our team that are promoting the Drug Policy Alliance's uh, Harm Reduction Curriculum. Uh, and we're very committed to making that happen. Uh, the second thing is that I think that children, um, when there's less stigma around uh, these types of plants can reach out to a parent if they have a concern. They can talk to their parents about it without feeling like they're going to get in trouble. And so that relationship between parents and students is going to be enhanced when we don't have uh, criminalization hanging over them. If another student offers them uh, psilocybin mushrooms, for example, they can go talk to their parent or a counselor, knowing that their friend uh, is not going to face like really serious legal charges with the police department. But instead, they're going to face, you know, appropriate consequences with their school and be discouraged from doing that. So I think removing that stigma is going to make youth uh, a lot safer, a lot safer in these communities. And we've seen that in Somerville where uh, you know, kids were always having trips, unfortunately. But they feel more comfortable telling their parents if they're uncomfortable, if they want to learn more uh, without feeling that they're gonna get in trouble for being honest uh, with their parents and with their school administrators. Uh, briefly, uh, Councillor Coniff, I really respect your concern as well. Uh, Michael Pollan is someone I have so many two-degree connections with, a very talented writer. What I'll say too is that he is also very connected to the medical complex um, that is promoting monopolization of these uh, plant medicines. And uh, you know, I don't care to weigh in on him as an individual, but what I will say is that the more regulations that we pile on to accessing these types of uh, plants, that again, according to the Lancet, are far, far, far less harmful than alcohol that is sold on every single corner store um, in our cities, uh, the more expensive it's gonna be for working-class people to access. Uh, currently, Americans can't afford a five hundred dollar expense, the average American can't. And these companies, including Compass Pathways, uh, wants to charge almost eleven thousand dollars for a regimen. Uh, personally, my mom has benefited a ton from psilocybin due to alcoholism she suffered. And uh, she is already paying half of her income as a Walmart employee to her insurance deductible, meaning that she would have to uh, you know, those insurance deductibles are already hitting average Americans really hard. So if we go that route and we require all these layers, um, it does add up. Um, Meechu, a member of our team, has counseled hundreds of people, if not thousands now. Just sitting with them in their, in their living room, they're not popping anything. They're, they're taking psilocybin mushrooms with intention to work through trauma, uh, and she sits with them and she comforts them. And I think that's the ideal model. Um, I don't think the ideal model is requiring Meechu to pay almost fifty thousand dollars for specialized training that's been approved by the FDA. Um, she has overcome her own traumas in life and doesn't have a college education, but she's a really caring and compassionate councillor. I'd say the same of indigenous healers. They shouldn't have to go through the Western medical complex to be able to host ayahuasca ceremonies that help a lot of people out too. Uh, so I think, I think medical access will be a good thing, but I think uh, there's a lot of money at stake by some of those companies to make sure that decriminalized community access uh, remains really hard and stigmatized. And um, I'm not the biggest fan of Michael Pollan for that reason, although I really liked his book too.
Thanks, James. Uh, Councillor Derby, I see your hand.
Thanks. I just wanted to clarify my position. I think it might have been taken out of uh, potentially out of context. It's not exactly what I meant. You know, this is us uh, setting our intentions a- as far as what we feel the state legislature should be doing and as far as enacting laws. And for me, as someone who has been teaching for over twenty years and had, I've had many students overdose on heroin, and I've lost many students to alcohol, I've lost many students to suicide. Um, and I would hate to see at the legislative level this being excluded as a treatment for them um, just because they're under twenty-one. Uh, by no means am I saying that uh, you know, high school students should be using this uh, i- in, in a cavalier way or a nonchalant way, but I have lost too many to exclude treatments that could potentially save their life. So I, I wanted to, I wanted to just make that really clear. Um, and, and no, and it's the same with THC, you know, my, my, one of my wife's close friends was spearheaded the medical uh, cannabis movement in Ohio because her daughter had uh, severe seizures that were life-threatening. And, and she had to fight to get her daughter, who was, you know, only seven years old at the time, treatment with THC. So it's, if, if there's a life-saving medicine out there, I don't want to see anybody excluded, is what I'm trying to say. So I hope that clarifies it a little bit.
Uh, alright, uh, Shelby. I see your hands.
Hi, I just wanted to uh, comment again on the um, medical supervision sort of aspect that's um, being discussed a little bit as someone who's uh, has significant health issues and is very familiar with the um, medical complex. Requiring like all of this licensing and um, those types of things that come along with bringing it into the Western medicine complex really makes it inaccessible to obtain for the most vulnerable people in our communities. And if we've learned anything in the last few years, I think it's that we really need to make a point of making sure that things are accessible to the most vulnerable members of our community. And um, you know, obviously finances are a big barrier for most people. Um, but there's also a lot of other gatekeeping at all kinds of levels that is a part of the Western medical complex. So just want to also put that in. Thanks.
Alright, I see Councillor Coniff, and I'm gonna elevate you as a member of the committee, and then I'll get to uh, Councillor Zerrit.
Well, I appreciate that. Um, I just want to be clear before we go off the rails and have everybody commenting on my comment. Not at all what I meant. Not talking about Western medicine complex. Just meant, and I think it's more aligned with what you were saying, James, that, that a caregiver, someone who is there in, in a sense to, to help you through it. Not at all, I was not anticipating the reaction, but I was certainly wasn't expecting that a person would go to a doctor, sit in a doctor's office, get prescribed this by a doctor and all, you know, get a deductible, go to the pharmacy. Nope, not what I was thinking at all. So um, if anybody has any more comments, that's not what I meant. So just want to clarify that.
Thank you. Uh, Councillor Zerrit.
Yeah, I just wanted to echo that the, I understood Councillor Coniff's comment as, as the way, as the way she just described that, that if people, there, there should just be information, and that information could both be available in terms of just broadly educating people as well as making sure that people are in the right hands. And that doesn't necessarily mean allopathic medicine. There's, there's, the, the, the way that these, the use of these plants is structured is much different than our traditional, very relatively new Western medicine. And so I just understood her to say that, you know, if you're going to use it, make sure you understand how you're using it and, or you, and or you have someone there to guide you in the youth. So I, I totally support that and uh, would be happy to. I don't know if I can write it on the fly, Councillor Coniff, but if you want me to try to give it a go, I could probably try to put something together for that.
It, it's not, it's not a requirement for me. I was just proposing it as um, something to add to it. We, I think tonight are going to um, approve as amended. And if there are specific things, once we get to full council, that we want to add, change or delete, we can do that. But I think based on the discussion here tonight, we can vote based on the discussion and kind of where we landed.
I think so too. And by the way, I just thought that was fascinating because when you're, it's funny when you like, you're, you're, you're talking about a policy issue and you sort of just accidentally touch like a sort of, like a third rail that like, is like, oh wow, I just suddenly understood like a whole new dimension of this debate that I didn't know was there before, but that was, that was super interesting. Um, so yeah, I feel like I, I'm ready to vote. Uh, I think everyone who's wanted to speak has had a chance to. Um, so at this time, um, normally I would entertain a motion, since there's only two of us, I'll, I'll make a motion to uh, recommend uh, this resolution as amended to the full council.
I can.
All in favor, Councillor Coniff?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. Great, thanks, everybody. Um, I think we're gonna turn next to this uh, the climate resolution. So anyone who came here for that first, uh, hold on one second. Uh, anyone that came for that first topic, like, feel free to stick around or leave, but sorry, Owen, did you have your hand?
Oh, yes, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to check when you thought for the people who are here advocating for this, which meet, do you think this will be in the October meeting or? Well, the council.
Yeah, let's, let's put it forward for the October meeting just because the, the September meeting's in two days. And that's just gonna mean that we're not gonna be able to actually get a draft out and have everyone, everyone like have a chance to review it before. Um, and I, like, there's not, I don't think there's anything, or unless, uh, President Coniff, do you have a different?
No, I just wanted to ask, do you envision this being, although it doesn't have to be, do you envision it being part of the public hearing? Or do you want it to just be an opportunity for the public to speak? Um, we don't typically engage. So what I'm trying to understand is, are we gonna allow the public to speak specifically to this issue when it comes up? Or do we recommend they speak to it right at the beginning of the meeting, and when we get to it, we get to it?
I mean, it's a resolution. I'm like sort of opposed to resolutions being in public hearings.
Okay.
But um, but we've done it, we've done it before. I wouldn't, like, if it's something, if there's anyone who wanted it to be part of the public hearing, then it's whatever. But I, I feel like since, since it's a resolution, it's non-binding. It would make the most sense to just do it in the regular order of business, and anyone who wants to speak can do so during our public speak.
Public speak, okay.
Um, but just because I know it's a sensitive issue, I, I do- But just because I know it's a sensitive issue, I, I do think maybe it makes sense to give. The full council a couple of weeks to have a chance to, to take a look at this and just see if they have any proposed amendments, so. That, I think that, that works for me. Okay, so with that said. Counselor Derby, do you want to talk about your climate resolution?
Sure. So I wanted to put forward the climate, the climate emergency resolution. For a couple of different reasons. I wanted to, I wanted to, if I had a visual, I would put my hair on fire, but I don't have that visual on Zoom. And, and I think that honestly, that's one of the reasons why I wanted to put this forward is because I feel like. This issue is so important at this moment that we should all have our hair on fire. As it relates to the climate and how we as a council are kind of setting our trajectory towards the future. And making sure that, and, and the reason I wanted to put this forward was because I thought that this could be. You know, similar to that, I mean, obviously the housing plan was, you know, very thought out and had a long document that went with it, but it was a roadmap. And, you know, this, I wanted to be a starting off point, a, a, a starting roadmap for us to kind of. Help us direct the rest of our actions on the council. Because, you know, if you look at what's happening on our planet, we're in peril and. It's time people start saying that out loud and start acknowledging that and. I want to make sure that we acknowledge that as a city council, so as we move forward, we can start prioritizing. Actions that are gonna help us, number one, harden ourselves and mitigate any impact from. Potential issues that are gonna arise from climate change, including, you know, climate refugees. And, you know, air quality issues, water across the board. And I, I want to help us elevate this issue to, to a higher level, so more people know that this is such an important. And, and real thing. And so that's, that's the reason why I put it forward and I can take questions or I, I don't need to speak for an hour on it. Thank you.
Well, I've read it and I agree with all of them, so I'm pretty easy. Counselor Coniff, do you have any thoughts on the, the resolutionary questions?
No. There's just some typos which we can correct either in council or. I don't have all of them in front of me, there's just some minor things, but we can clean that up before we do the final vote, but no, I'm, I'm supportive of this as well.
Okay, well, do we just want to take a vote on it now then? I mean, this just sort of seems like a no-brainer.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I was just gonna say, it's really kind of a no-brainer and I think, you know, there can be more of a. For the public and transparency and communication at the full council, I think there's a broader audience there, so. You know, I think I'm, I'm very prepared to vote on it now.
Okay, I see Counselor Gomez's hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to say thank you to Counselor Derby to, to bring these forward. Especially today, for me is a really emotional day. Why? Four years ago, a huge hurricane was hitting Puerto Rico. Maria killed more than four thousand Puerto Ricans and the climate change is real. And again, thank, thank you for bringing this forward. This is the perfect time to do it and everybody have to learn that we have to do. As much as we can to save our planet, not just for us, for our kids, for our grandkids and for the, for the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Gomez. Counselor Zaret, I see your hand.
Just really quickly, Counselor Derby invited me to co-sponsor this. I just wanted to say I'm. I, I have nothing else to add. Thank you for, it's, it's really well written. I agree with everything that my colleague Counselor Gomez said as, as well and. You know, one of the things that I really attracted me to the council when I first ran was Counselor Derby's passion for the environment. We really connected about that, so. This is awesome. We'll make it happen.
All right. Well, in that case, I will make a motion to recommend the climate emergency resolution to the full council. All in favor, Counselor Coniff? And I vote I as well. All right.
Thank you.
That was easy. I might actually put that one forward in two days because I just don't understand, like, it just seems. It, it doesn't seem as touchy and I just feel like there's just no reason to not do it. If, if that's agreeable with everybody. Okay, well, those were, I, I, I think the rule twenty thing we already voted on, so. I, I'm like.
I don't know if we did, Tom, but I mean, it's still on the agenda all over the place, so I don't know.
Okay, well.
If we voted on it, it's not coming back to me, but.
Okay, well, my understanding from the rule twenty thing. Oh, wait, no, you're right, the rule twenty thing, I was confusing that with. The other rule, the rule twenty thing, we were just gonna sit on until we had got all the IT stuff figured out. Because. There was just like, what, what was actually in the realm of the possible and. How that was all evolving with East Hampton Media and everything was kind of. Was kind of up in the air and we just, I think that was the agreement, was we were gonna wait until like the switch over to Google meets and. Until we were like honestly, like ready, like completely ready to go with an in-person, like back. Getting back to it thing, like technologically, not like epidemiologically, but. Once we were like, once we were at the point that like, if we felt good about it, we could just go back tomorrow was like when we were gonna start talking about that. Because in the meantime, there was just too many unknowns, so I'm just gonna leave that on there for now. And with nothing else on our agenda, I will make a motion to adjourn. All right, all in favor, Counselor Coniff?
I, sure.
I vote I as well, so thanks, everyone. Quick one-hour meeting, not too bad. I'll see most of you in two days.